Welcome to the July 22, 2022, meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting allows for alternate participation in order to accommodate all citizens. Any written comments sent to staff were forwarded to the commission directly. This time I'd like to introduce our staff. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. Michael Gardner, Civil Engineer. Zach Pons, Acting Director of Planning. Kaitlin Giles, Development Review Coordinator. Haley Harris, Planner. Tiana Rivas, Office Administrator. There are nine members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, all who were appointed by the mayor, for staggered terms with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask that the commission members introduce themselves and state their occupation. Begin, Ms. Hare.
Stella Hare, Finance.
Eddie Pugh, Retired Firefighter.
Steven Rumsey, Business Owner.
Dina Prince, Attorney.
Vince Dooley, UA Construction Administration.
Tim Harrison, General Contractor. And Bill Wright, Business Owner. There are signup sheets outside for public comment. If you did not sign up, you will still be given the opportunity to speak. Procedures: This commission will take up items in the order of our final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same properties such as an annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, we'll then call upon the petitioner to present their case. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, I will then call upon any other party in order of sign up or otherwise who desires to support the petition, and thereafter will call in order of sign up or otherwise those who oppose the petition. When it's your turn for comment, staff will introduce you to the commission to provide your remarks. Any written comments have been included into the record. We reserve the right to limit the time of remarks as to those agenda items with lengthy signup sheets or where continued from previous meetings. After receiving the remarks of those who opposed the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, we will allow those who oppose the opportunity to respond to the new information only. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your allowed time limit. Once the commission members are satisfied they have received all relevant information, I will then close further discussion by the public, at which time the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone or virtually are video recorded through the conferencing application. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction: In all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city, and its planning jurisdictions, and as to amendments planned unit developments and located outside the city limits, this commission serves as the final authority. As to matters pertaining to historic buffer zone construction, our decisions are subject to appeal to the City Council. As to all remaining agenda matters including original zonings, rezonings, planned unit developments within the city, and street vacations, this commission serves as a recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approvals require the affirmative vote of six members. All matters which are recommendations to the Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. Do any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters tonight? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all matters before the commission tonight.
It has.
Okay. All right. With that, we will begin requests for continuance.
First item on the agenda tonight, we have one item of consent. It is PS 7022 North River Marina Condominiums. This also has a PUD with it, and you will hear that later on this evening. The petitioner is here in person if any questions.
We have the consent agenda item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Great. Moving forward, we do have one case that was withdrawn, S 3922 Hunter's Bluff. This was continued from May and June of 2022. And we do have one case that is requesting to withdraw, which is S 5622 Ridge Haven South. This was continued from last month, and the petitioner is here in person.
Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I'm Al Caban, Assistant Engineer, representing SRC Contractors. They have requested that we withdraw this plan.
Okay, we have a withdrawal request for S 5622 Ridge Haven South. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Withdrawn.
Commission, we have two cases that are requesting to continue this evening. We have S 6922, The Grove at Murphy Place, and S 6822, The Blue Heron Subdivision. Both are from the same petitioner, and they are here in person as well.
Petitioner?
Jason Walker with TTL 2890 Rice Mine Road Northeast Tuscaloosa. We're representing both the petitioners on both of these cases, so I'm not sure if they're being requested individually or collectively, but we would request continuation.
Let's do them individually.
Okay. Yeah, then representing the builders group on this first petition. Requesting continuance.
Okay. Commissioners for us have S 6922, The Grove at Murphy Place, asking for continuance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
And likewise, on the second case for Blue Heron, on behalf of Mr. Sisson, would request that be continued as well.
Okay. Commission, before us, we have a continuous request for S 6822 Blue Heron Subdivision. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
We have one companion case for the evening. It is consisting of an annexation and a rezoning, and we will begin with the annexation. So we have AN 422. This is annexing approximately 102 acres located at and around the intersection of Industrial Park Drive and Joe Malisham Parkway. Here's the vicinity map. This is property that is adjacent to the Tuscaloosa National Airport. And here is an aerial view. This goes through framework, and framework identified this as a future growth area. Here's the future land use character map. And this is to expand the Tuscaloosa National Airport. As always, the eight points of evaluation criteria were outlined. And this is touching more on the evaluation criteria. Any questions on the annexation before we move into the rezoning? Moving forward, we have Z 1522. The City of Tuscaloosa petitions to rezone approximately 102 acres located at and around the intersection of Industrial Park Drive and Joe Malisham Parkway from R1 to Institutional. This is not in city limits currently, but once if annexed in, it'll be in Council District One. And again, the vicinity map. And the aerial. And here is the subject property. The property specifically will be on the bottom left-hand side of your screen. And the adjacent property, which is the airport, so Institutional. And they are requesting to rezone from R1 to Institutional to expand the airport. This does not technically conform to framework. Framework does identify this as Flex Employment Center. However, it does conform with the airport master plan. This is to expand the runway. Again, the future land use character map. And the Institutional District Regulations. Do you have any questions for staff?
Do you serve as petitioner?
I'm sorry?
Who's serving as petitioner?
We have our airport manager.
Petitioner?
Good evening. Nothing to add. The staff already covered. I would confirm that this is part of the airport master plan recommendations. Other than that, I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for petitioner? None. Thank you very much. All right, Commission. For us, we have companion case. We have AN 0422, want to annex approximately 102 acres at the airport. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved. Before us, Commission, we have Z 1522. City of Tuscaloosa petition to rezone the 102 acres from R1 to Institutional. Do I have a motion and a second?
Remove.
Ms. Hare?
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
Moving into our other business for the evening, we are going to go over the planned unit development, which is P 622. This is North River Marina Condominiums, a mixed-use development consisting of 34 residential condominium units, a restaurant, and a 1,500 square foot Marina store on approximately 14.7 acres located at 8,500 Mount Batten Road Northeast. This is in Council District Three. Here's the vicinity map. This is within North River Yacht Club area. And here's an aerial view of the property. In the narrative, it outlines that this will be a new multi-story residential condominium building. They will also renovate the existing onsite restaurant, and they will construct a new Marina store, which will be around 1,500 square feet. Within the condominium building, it will have 34 units with structured parking. The structured parking will not be visible from the lake, public streets, or adjacent private properties. Within the 34 units, there will be 22-bedroom units, 10 three-bedroom units, and four one-bedroom units. In the narrative, they went on to say that owners of the condominium units will be required to maintain a membership at North River Yacht Club, and that the general public will be able to purchase gas and miscellaneous items at the Marina store. Here's a view of the property. And here is their conceptual site plan. Zooming into the top left-hand corner of your screen, this is where the Marina store will be located. They've outlined the fuel station as well, some boat parking. Going towards the center of the site plan, this is where the main condominium building will be. They're also proposing to add a pool and the structured parking deck. It's my understanding that there will be two entrances to the parking deck, one at the top, which will circle around to that little circle drive that you see, and then one that will drop down and enter through here. And then at the bottom of this development is where the kitchen will be renovated, or not the kitchen, the restaurant kitchen will be inside. They'll also have outdoor patio seating. And then going through the floor plans, I believe this is an underground level. It was listed as negative one level, so I believe that would be underground. Here's that main level. And the second level, now we're entering with that, the parking, the structured parking. There are 43 spaces here. I believe the total parking included is 126 parks, between 120 and 130. And then on the second level is also where they'll have the dumpsters located. Here's the third level. The fourth, we're entering the circle drive parking now. And the top level. Here are some renderings to show what it could and would look like. So here's the circle parking area, and then underneath is where the second through third parking levels will be. Here's another photo showing the restaurant and the condominium building itself. And this shows the Marina storefront. Framework did outline this area as open space and recreation. So that would consist of parks, more open space. Here's the future land use character map. Do you have any questions for staff before the petitioner comes up?
Ma'am?
All right.
Petitioner?
Good evening. Jason Walker with TTL 2890 Rice Mine Road Northeast Tuscaloosa. And I'm proud tonight to represent Spaces Management, Andy Turner, the developer represented here tonight, and then Pool &amp; Company Architects, John Pool is here as well. Very vertical project in nature, obviously, so any detailed questions related to structure and architectural, John and/or Andy can speak to those questions. But again, it's a pretty thorough presentation and a pretty exhaustive design process that was gone through relative to both architectural site access, et cetera, so just, I don't know, we feel like it's a strong, tight concept plan, taking, you know, any concerns through the initial development of the concept into consideration, but be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Can you go back to the boat slip configuration? Is that the best view we got of the overall? So currently, there's current docks there now, north of the fuel station, opposed, right?
Right.
And the ones to the south there, those are currently there.
To the far south. In some form, there are docks there, but not posed.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. That existing dock platform, you can see on the south end.
Okay. So that's not a covered, that's not a covered docks there?
No.
And you're going to bring some more on the, call it the south side?
South and west.
Any questions for petitioner? Anyone else from your team care to make any comments?
Good evening. Andy Turner, 1810 Commons North Drive, Suite 1, Tuscaloosa, 35406. I just want to thank you all for hearing this tonight. We've worked really hard on this project, tried to be very thoughtful about the design and the architecture to really pay homage to what's been there at North River and kind of what Jack Warner created there, while also bringing it up to date with kind of the modern conveniences and styles today as well, and try to make this something that's going to be a real asset to the area. And we're very excited about the project, and if you guys are too.
Did you get any comments from the residents of the North River Yacht Club area?
So we went through a very long process before we even started designing. So we met with the advisory board at North River, and then we met with the adjoining neighbors. We met with Westerveld's representatives. Then we put this out to all the membership, and so we've been kind of through a very thorough step-by-step process all the way.
Well, you obviously did a good job because you're not here in opposition to it, so...
Did a really good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, that's a beautiful-looking project.
Andy, I got one question. The units, made up of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, I noticed there was a D suite or DEV suite. What is that?
Those are one-bedrooms. Basically, we like the project so much, each of us is keeping a unit.
I got you.
So that's what that is.
So those aren't sold.
Those aren't, those are sold. Let's put it that way.
Nice view.
Any other comments or questions for petitioners? Haven't heard none. Thank you. Anyone in the public care to make comments for or against this petition, please come forward.
My shoe broke today. But anyways, okay. So I live at the corner of Essex and Mount Batten.
Ma'am, name the address for the record, please.
8320 Essex Circle Northeast.
And your name?
Jennifer Eggers.
Okay.
I'm also a member of North River, and all of that will be behind my house. I have three children. We live in a neighborhood. It is a neighborhood with 34 condos. In my opinion, that is 68 potential more cars driving through. I have three young children, 11, 9, and a 20-month-year-old son. My concern is, well, one, the wildlife. There's a lot of deer, a lot of birds, foxes that live back there. All of that beauty will be gone. Where will the animals go? As of right now, you know, we're driving up Watermelon Road, you know, you see a lot of dead deer on the side of the road. It's going to cause accidents. Mount Batten was recently repaved, and once the trucks and the tractors come and start doing all of that, you know, the road's going to get messed up. Unfortunately, due to my schedule and my husband's schedule, my 11-year-old and 9-year-old, you know, come home to an empty house. As of right now, I feel extremely safe, but when there's construction going on back there, you know, somebody will have to be home for the children. There's also many other children in the neighborhood that ride the bus and walk to their house. Also, another concern is that Lake Tuscaloosa, from what I understand, is our drinking water. How, I mean, I think from what I understand, all of this will have to be on a septic tank. What if it overflowed and polluted our drinking water? It is, from what I understand, a dry lake. If there's a restaurant, obviously alcohol will be served. What about the boaters that come there and overdrink and get behind the wheel of a boat? Accidents could happen. Not only that, the gates enter the places directly behind my house. So therefore, you know, if my children are out playing, you know, and God forbid, they run in the road, and you know, there's 68 more cars, you know, for these condos, and people go into the restaurant and things like that, I mean, it's a neighborhood. It's not McFarland Boulevard is the way I see it. That is my concern also. You know, the construction is obviously going to be, it's going to be a long process. You know, I have a young son. He takes snacks. I don't know, it's just, it's a lot to think about that behind your home and the wildlife and the excess traffic through the neighborhood. Our neighborhood's very peaceful and quiet, and it won't be anymore. I think it's going to take away from that. You know, I know a lot of people would like to see something back there. There's, you know, I believe some work could be done, but 34 condos seems a little, a little much for a neighborhood. So that is my concern. Also, I don't know, I came in late. I thought this would be at the end. The boat slips, from what I understand, if they're not rented out by club members, they will be open to the public. And I don't, it's a private neighborhood. Like I said, we feel very safe there. I mean, so much so that my children are able to come home to an empty house, and you know, that safety, that security will be taken. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for or against this petition? Okay, having heard no one else, would the petitioner care to come and address issues that were raised by individuals in opposition?
I guess from a use standpoint, Andy can speak to some of those questions that were raised if needed, but you know, from a, just a technical standpoint, it won't be on a septic tank. It will be on public sewer, so just to clarify that, that would be a major obstacle and wouldn't allow the project if it was onsite type sewage treatment. So I guess to clarify that one point.
Thank you.
And then just as far as the restaurant, as part of the way that that will operate is it's not just a open-to-the-public restaurant. In order to dine at the restaurant, you have to be a member of North River Yacht Club or have a slip at the Marina. And so it's not just, it's not going to be a dramatic traffic increase of people coming to the restaurant.
Any questions for the petitioner about those objections raised by...
What are the hours of operation for the restaurant?
So currently, so what's going to happen on the restaurant is I'm going to renovate it and improve it from its current condition, and I'm leasing that back to North River, and they are going to operate that. So they ultimately will set the hours, but as part of the conditions, I do have requirements for them to operate at a minimum number of hours, which is from May through October 31st, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, yeah, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to be open. So it's a more of a seasonal structure right now. But the final hours will be up to them, but they have to minimally do that.
I guess it's probably worth noting as well that this, this area is currently operated as kind of a private commercial area with events and parties and things like that. So that use would, is there now.
Correct. Yeah, they currently lease this out for weddings, wedding parties. They have TGIF there on the weekends, so it currently functions that way.
Any more questions of the petitioners? Thank you. All right. No one else has signed up for or against, and we have heard the rebuttal from the petitioners on those who were in opposition. Commission, before us, we have a P 0622 North River Marine Condominiums. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Target? Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Moving into rezonings for the evening, we have three. We'll begin with Z 1422. This was continued from last month. Alabama One Credit Union petitions to rezone approximately 6.37 acres located at 1,000 Jack Warner Parkway Northeast from Institutional to BN. This is in Council District Five. Here's the vicinity map. It's on Jack Warner, near the intersection of Helen Keller. And here's an aerial view. Here's the subject property. The adjacent eastern property, which is Hillside Commons, and the adjacent southern property, which is the Eddie Love Water Treatment Facility. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Institutional to BN to update the classification to reflect the current use of the property. The reason this is up before all of you is because they were doing some renovations and triggered that they're not in the right zone, so we wanted to fix that, and they are here before you tonight.
How long have they been operating there?
Good question. How long have they been operating? So credit unions actually aren't required to obtain business licenses, so we don't have a record of how long they've been there. It's been a while.
I attended a meeting there about two or three years ago, so I know they've been there.
Why aren't they... Somebody else's job.
That's right. Above our pay grade.
We're here now. This does conform to framework. Framework identifies this land as riverfront development. We're here now. This does conform to framework. Framework identifies this land as riverfront development. It's including residential, commercial, integrated mix of uses. And here's that future land use character map. And the permitted uses in BN. Do you have any questions for staff before they come up?
Ma'am, thank you. Petitioner. We have a petitioner. Petitioner online or is the petitioner in the house?
They should be here in person. Let us double-check Zoom for you.
I guess they get to come back.
They are not here on Zoom. Looking for Whitney Oswald.
Yep, we're showing a Whitney Oswald.
She just logged on to Zoom.
She just logged in? Okay.
Good timing.
Boy, I tell you what, real good timing.
All right, we're getting them pulled up for you now. Mr. Oswald, you can go ahead with your petition. Mr. Oswald, you can go ahead and begin speaking.
Okay, I'm not exactly sure what I'm supposed to say, but.
Need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. My name's Whitney Oswald. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Alabama One Credit Union. And we are petitioning the council for zoning reclassification from Institutional to BN for our branch that is located on 1,000 Jack Warner Parkway. It's the Alabama Mental Health Credit Union Branch. We applied for a permit to add on to the building, and during the permit review process, it was discovered that the property was still classified as institutional, and the Planning and Zoning Commission has requested that we make an application for that reclassification. I think we've submitted the paperwork, and we've got a corresponding signature from Brian Penn, who is the land manager for the Alabama Department of Mental Health. So, that's the substance of our request today.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Oswald? Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission before us, we have Z-1422, Alabama One Credit Union rezoning from Institutional to BN. Do I have a motion and a second?
Removed. Second.
Is there?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Motion approved. Thank you.
Moving into our next rezoning case, we have Z-1622, University of Alabama Board of Trustees petitions to rezone approximately 1.33 acres located at 2015 McFarland Boulevard East from Institutional to BN. This is in Council District Six. Here's the vicinity map. This is right next to Snow Hinton Park in between Snow Hinton and the mall, University Mall, right in front of Bolero. It's the old Alabama Fire College. And here's that property again. The adjacent northern property. And the adjacent southern property, Snow Hinton Park. They are requesting to rezone from Institutional to BN to lease the property to a developer for the construction of a new restaurant. Here is a conceptual site plan of what a restaurant could look like here. And framework classifies this as corridor commercial, which does conform to the plan. And here's that future land use character map. And the permitted uses for BN. Do you have any questions for staff?
Go back to the site plan, the one that, kind of the rough drawing there. So, there will not be any new entrances onto McFarland Boulevard, or how?
This is a really rough sketch. It's hard to say. Look, here it shows that it would be accessing off of a sub-street, hopefully between the property and Snow Hinton. But the logistics of it haven't been worked out.
Go back to the area.
So, yeah, that drive that exists could be the entrance.
They can get the property off of that towards the northern part, right here. Okay.
Let me, let me interject. Just late last week, I had a conversation with Skipper Consulting. They are approaching ALDOT about changing the, the condition of that right turn. So, we're, we're expecting to see a modification as to how you access that off of McFarland.
Because that's, that's a turn lane there, going into the University Mall property?
Yeah, yes, that is the turn lane that starts right there in front of the Fire College.
I could see was that, you know, getting in there is easy, but then if you're going to try to get out of that property back onto McFarland Boulevard, you're turning a lot of traffic back into the turn lane going into University Mall. That'd be my only concern.
The anticipation at this point right now is to extend the right turn lane south along the side of the park based on, based on design speed, and then probably make that southern drive on the south side of the Fire College a right-in and right-out condition.
Sure y'all figured it out.
Especially with ALDOT, ma'am.
That's right.
Go, go real quick.
All right, thank you. Petitioner.
Good evening. Draper McMillan, McGuffin Associates, 2814 Stillman Boulevard, here on behalf of the University of Alabama. And I will kind of echo what Mr. Gardner just said. There are plans for improvements to this intersection, extension of the turn lane and whatnot. And so, the primary entrance would be off of the, basically the road between the park and this parcel. And this has all been coordinated with the park's master plan, and also we've been in communication with staff about that as well.
Any more, any questions for the petitioner? Or any more comments from the petitioner?
Draper, we must really trust you and the city to prove this conceptual plan on whatever ALDOT might do. So, we have faith in you about that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone, no one has signed up for any petition tonight. Would anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition? Okay, having heard none. Commission before us, we have Z-1622, University Alabama Board of Trustees petition to rezone from Institutional to BN. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion. Second. Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion.
The last rezoning case of the night, we have Z-1722, Eat My Beats petitions to rezone approximately 1.72 acres located at 4755 Jug Factory Road from ML to BN. This is in Council District Seven. Here's that vicinity map. And the aerial view. And another image of the property. Here's the adjacent southern property, Southern Bath and Kitchen. And the adjacent northern property. They're requesting to rezone from ML to BN to use land beside Eat My Beats to build a restaurant and a listening room. And here's a conceptual site plan of what that could look like. Zooming in to look at it a little bit further. They'll have a kitchen, event space. All in total, I believe it's around forty-four hundred square feet. Framework identifies this as limited commercial, and it does conform to the plan. Neighborhood commercial includes mixed use, near neighborhoods, on the edge, and this does a buttham residential area. Here's the future land use character map. And here are the permitted uses in BN.
Any questions for staff? Petitioner.
Good evening. Nikki Ray representing Eat My Beats at 4755 Jug Factory Road, Tuscaloosa, 35405. I really have a lot to add to what she said. Do you guys have any questions?
One of the questions we discussed in our pre-meeting was parking. Right there doesn't appear to be any kind of formalized parking in.
There is not. We currently, you know, have a retail store there, which we don't usually have a lot of cars, so we haven't had it striped. I did meet with Stripes this past week. He's determined we can get around forty-five parking spaces there, and that's leaving that loading dock open. So, we would be able to access that as well for an additional few spaces after five o'clock when we close. We also have previously met with our neighbors to use some of their parking at Southern Bath, and we think there's probably about thirty to thirty-five spaces there as well that we would have an agreement if we had, if we needed it for that.
Engineering staff?
Yeah, so we'll work with them. We obviously wouldn't be able to issue permits if they're not meeting their, meeting their parking. If they don't meet the parking, they could request a special exception to zoning board of adjustment, but, you know, we'll get there when we get there, but.
So, I counted about, real quick, I thought I counted about fifty-six seats in your restaurant, and I didn't get to count the ones outside. You're going to be close.
We are close. Based off my, you know, divided by fifteen or whatever, or the, whatever, thousand square feet, I mean, a hundred square feet, we're, we're right there. And we may have to change the zoning on some of that on the open-air venue to be more restaurant seating. But we're working with engineering in the city on, on making those parking spaces.
Well, get ahead of the agreement. Be a lot easier that way. You can get the property, adjoining property, and we'll work with you. Because obviously you're going to have, you know, customers and employees.
Correct. And we also have the Golden Flake and some others on the down that would possibly, we haven't spoken with them yet, but would possibly have some of that space too, because most everyone around us is closed by five o'clock.
Are you utilizing all the existing building, like on this drawing here?
We can't, we have a variance on what we currently have, just because we do have some retail space, but we would be zoning that whole entire area for, well, that may be a, that may be a question for.
All this property is going to be rezoned?
Sorry, what'd you say?
Is all the property, I'm looking at the property line here, we've got the restaurant, which needs to be BN, and the existing building is?
The whole property is being.
The whole property, okay.
But majority, I would say seventy-five percent of that existing building is warehouse space. It's a very small portion that's retail.
Is that y'all's building as well?
Correct, yes.
What does, what does retail mean?
So, we have guitars. We're a music store. And I would guess thousand square feet probably of that, probably. That's, yeah, of retail. And the rest is all storage and unair-conditioned warehouse space.
I got one question. What is a listening room? I guess it could sound?
So, it is. It's, it's going to be a lot of acoustics. I know neighborhoods were brought up. We don't intend on being, it will be more acoustic listening, beer garden concept.
What did you?
Beer garden.
I like that.
We don't have, yeah, we don't have that in Tuscaloosa, so very art. We're trying to bring something. We, we, if you know Matt and I, we've tried to do this for several years now. I've even talked to some people in the council about this. But green space is kind of the, what we were going for to have plenty of green space, and we, we obviously own that property, so. Trying to make Tuscaloosa a little more hip.
Good luck. Any more questions for the petitioner?
So, you'll have live act?
We will have some acoustic acts. It's a small stage, but possibly, yes, live music.
Anything else? Any questions or any more comments? Thank you. No one has signed up again for any petition tonight, but is anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Tanya Prince. This is my sister Heather Witherspoon. We're here on behalf of our parents' estate, which is on the back portion of Eat My Beats. Our family and other families right behind that area have lived there since the late sixties, early seventies. We're very concerned because my mother is eighty-three years old. She's concerned as well about what's going to be in the area. She wants to make sure that she's able to continue to live peaceably in her home, that they have really worked very hard over the years, my father and mother. My father just passed last year. So, her serenity, peace in the neighborhood is one of the things that is very important to her, and we're just very concerned about what's going to be in that area. One of my main concerns is the acoustics as the young lady just discussed. And my mother, eighty-three years old, living right behind that area, how peaceful is that going to be for her to live? So, we're here on her behalf, not just the noise level, but traffic as well. That area is a very high-traffic area, particularly during Alabama football games. We have the Dreamland neighborhood up there. We do have children and grandchildren in that area, so we're very concerned about that as well. So, I am for improvements in that area, but I do think we need to be mindful of people that have lived there for years, especially those that have put so much into their neighborhoods. And the reason my parents moved there was for the peace and serenity, the wooded area. And as more and more businesses move in, it's, as that is slowly being stripped away. So, we're very concerned about what's going to be in that area that will interfere with however many years she has left here in her peace and serenity in a home that she has worked very hard, she and my father, over the past couple of years.
Ma'am, you should, let me ask you a question. You say behind. Yeah, where is?
Can we see it?
We're thinking back toward Sky Island, but I think you're thinking in front.
Okay.
Maybe. Yeah, give us an idea of where.
Isn't this an industrial?
My mother's on 12th Avenue East, to the right of your map there.
She's there in that area?
And when you come out of 12th Avenue East and make that right back down towards the Southern Pike and the Eat My Beats, it's right in her backyard. There's a wooded area that separates that.
Where's the landfill compared to that?
It's south of this or that road.
But is it?
This is just where you turn off of.
Can you?
Eighty-two and McDonald's.
Can you zoom out any, Zach?
Can you, can we see an overhead of it without?
McDonald's is back to the left.
Yeah, understand that, but I'm just trying to get the bigger picture.
So.
Of where the house.
What's the biggest, what's the biggest area you have? Zach, see, what's the biggest area you got that's a land shot?
This is probably the biggest area that we have.
Can you go back with the ones that shows?
But the aerial, yeah.
Trees and all that. Let's see that.
We just see a satellite view.
So, right there. So, all right. Where would your parents' house be?
Let me see where we are.
I was thinking back here somewhere, wasn't it?
That's what?
That's the back of, that's the back of the Eat My Beats building there.
Okay, that's Eat My Beats. Okay, so that wooded area going to the right.
Where that arrow is?
Right. That wooded area runs parallel with, with Twelfth Avenue East.
Is that a?
We're on the other side of those wooded sticks.
Way back. What's, what's the terrain back in there? Is that, is that, I can't really make that out. Is that a drop-off? So, okay. It's gonna be over here to the left, yeah. Way over here. Yeah, yeah. Okay, we wanted to get an idea of where you were, so please, let me interrupt you, but if you have anything else to add?
Okay, Heather.
No, I think that's it.
We're very concerned about it.
In a lighting plus.
Okay. All right. We, we understand your, your issues, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else here to speak for or against this petition? Petitioner has the opportunity to address the concerns raised, or comment those issues.
Yes, so we worked with Mike Ellis on our renderings, and we were very mindful of the fact that there were some neighborhoods. Keep in mind, this is not a bar. We do not want to be a bar. We are, it is more of a restaurant. So when we have music, it will be guitar acoustic music. So it will be very, and we will not be open late. We haven't set exact hours.
You haven't set the hours of operation?
We haven't, but we're thinking probably ten or eleven.
And what nights of the week would you be having events, let's say?
We haven't again completely set that, but probably Thursday, Friday, Saturday, like some of the local other establishments in town where you would have.
So not gonna be a bar, not gonna have music every night? Go back up to the, pull back up the design of the building there. So where would, where would the, where would, where would, if you have outdoor entertainment, where would that be?
So that open air venue, correct. There, there's the, depending on parking, and again, we're having to work with the city on capacity, but we're thinking there would be a stage there. It doesn't show table and chairs there. We may have to do more restaurant.
Okay.
We're thinking restaurant seating and thinking beer garden where there would be picnic tables and seating and maybe some background.
All right. So the, so that area says lower plaza.
Correct.
So that'll be stepped down from the
Yes.
current height of the building and the height of the overall building at the, at the plaza level.
And that was also to reduce sound.
Okay, so that's, is that gonna be a lower roof line than the current building that's there now? You're saying as far as, because that warehouse is up on a hill, correct?
It is, correct.
It's a pretty tall building. What's the height of that building? You know, that warehouse?
Yeah, twenty feet probably.
So it would be lower than that?
Yes.
At grade of the parking, and then this venue platform would be lower than that?
Correct.
Okay. That would, that would to me serve as a bucket of noise.
And that was part of the design, is to be very mindful of the neighboring people around. Any other questions?
Not really a question, but maybe just for clarification, in case there are other neighbors that are watching. But, you know, along with the natural buffers that you already have and what you're already doing to control the sound, just for clarification, when you talk about acoustics, that's different. An acoustic guitar, that would be different from the electric guitars and the keyboards that would amplify and, and might create a sound, so, you know.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, yes. So this is, that's also helping with the sound traveling because it's just acoustic sounds.
Yes.
Okay, mainly, okay.
We're, we're thinking more sit-down dinner, drink a beer, and listen to some background music type of things.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. No one else, anyone, anyone else care to speak? I guess not. All right. Any comments from the commission members? If not, we'll...
I just, I just know that they do a sound setup for the city and all around the city. If there's an expert in Tuscaloosa, it's them as far as being able to set the sound system up to where it doesn't affect other people. I've got a hundred and ten percent confidence in them, and if it can be done right, they'll do it right.
And when you want to amplify, they can do it right, too.
They're good.
Good to know.
Eat My Beats is not like a health food.
It is, but not. With an A, not an E.
I thought it was that red stuff they, they...
Beats with an E, two E's, right?
Were you getting worried?
Yeah.
All right, okay. No one, any comments or too much information we didn't hear about? All right. Okay, commission before us, we have Z seventeen twenty-two Eat My Beats petition to rezone. One point seven two acres located at forty-seven fifty-five Jug Factory Road, ML, from ML to BN. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Ms. Hare?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
Give just a few seconds. All righty, moving into our preliminary plots for the evening. We'll start with S sixty-two twenty-two. This is the Holloman subdivision number two, a re-survey of lots three and four, Holloman subdivision number one, consisting of two residential lots on approximately one point five six acres located at three and four Beach Hills Drive. This is in Council District Six. Here's the vicinity map, just off of Loop Road, Hargrove Road East. Here's the aerial view. Here is the plat with contours and without. So it's two lots, remaining two lots. They're just straightening up their lot line. They are requesting a variance from lot size, so this property, or both of these properties are located in the Estate Lot Conservation Overlay District. So what that means is in the code, it says that any lot that's in the LCOT overlay has to be two acres minimum, and they do not meet that. So that is why they're asking for that variance tonight.
Say it again, two acres?
Yes.
And those are below that anyway?
They are, yeah.
They weren't, they weren't in...
Yep, they're not increasing the non-conformity.
Well, thank you.
All righty.
I guess we have no issues with the lot size? Okay. Petitioner?
Kevin Hinkle with Montgomery and Hinkle, Inkland Surveying, two oh three Hargrove Road East, representing the owners of the two lots. And they are straightening that one lot line out. It doesn't need to be in that dogleg position anymore, which it would be more conforming to what was desired by the city.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none, commission before us, we have S sixty-two twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, next case, we have S sixty-three twenty-two. This is the re-survey of lots one and two of Rain Tree Number Four. This is a reconfiguration of two existing residential lots on approximately two point three eight acres located at one, two, nine, four, three Bear Creek Road and one thirteen thousand Rain Tree Drive. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map, south of Little Sandy Creek. And an aerial view. Here is the plat with contours and without. So again, this is two remaining two. They're just shifting a lot line in the center. And they are requesting sidewalks and capped sewer.
Engineering?
We're in agreement with waiver requests.
Thank you. Petitioner?
I'm Mr. Chairman, member of the commission, Marty Montgomery, Montgomery, Inkland Surveying, representing Linda Crocker in this two-lot subdivision. Again, just to resituate that, the dividing line to, so the mobile home on lot two will be in, in the lot.
Say it again, the, the current mobile home is on the lot line, pretty much?
It's pretty close to the lot line.
Could move the mobile home, couldn't you?
That would be a, probably a good thing, but...
Seems like a lot to go through to move a property line, but, who do I, who do I, any other comments? Anything else? Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Mr. Rumsey, you want to start the motion?
Uh, motion to approve.
S sixty-three twenty-two, re-surveys lot one and two of Rain Tree Number Four. I have a motion and a second. Ms. Hare? Ms. Hare?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion approved, yes. Motion approved. Get out of, get out of line here, aren't we? Out of order, I'm sorry.
We're moving quick.
Remember, he was up twenty minutes.
I must say, I got no control, dude. Got a hammer, no control.
All righty, moving right along. We've got S sixty-four twenty-two. This is the Factory Edition Number Two, a re-survey of lots thirty-four through thirty-eight. Factory Edition, consisting of one industrial lot on approximately point four six acres, located at twenty-five fourteen Twenty-Ninth Street in Council District Two. Here's the vicinity map. Now, let's see, Harmon Park is to the east. Trying to get a feel for where we are in the world. Clue says to the south. Here's an aerial view of the property. And here's the plat with contours and without. So this is just to consolidate into one lot, clean up some of the remnant lot lines. And they are requesting half-street improvements and sidewalks.
Engineering?
We're in agreement.
Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marty Montgomery, Montgomery, Inkland Surveying, two oh three Hargrove Road East, Tuscaloosa. I, we are just trying to make this into one lot, also in the process of trying to vacate half of Twenty-Eighth Street, but... That'll have to be done a little bit later date if we can do it.
Would you come back and add that?
We're gonna have to.
Yeah. Does Twenty-Eighth hit that back property line there, or is there?
No, sure. Well, I mean...
I'd say Twenty-Eighth's a little higher to the north, isn't it?
Yeah, Twenty-Eighth is adjacent to it, and there's a little piece left that's adjacent to lot thirty-three there. But it's a vacant street now. It's not open.
So you're saying vacate what?
Twenty-Eighth. Our, our half of Twenty-Eighth Street, if that's possible. That'll have to be the, it's in the, it's in the process. They've had some sickness, I believe, in the...
So you're gonna come back on that?
Yes.
I understand your frustration with vacation.
If the vacation is presented, it needs to vacate the full right of way.
Good luck.
We wouldn't be in favor of just vacating half of the right of way. Right of way vacation laws, I mean, I don't even know if it's legally possible. We need to vacate the entire right of way. This owner would receive the southern half of the right of way. The northern owner would receive the northern half of the right of way by law.
Right.
Does the, does the northern owner, well, why would, but does the northern, northern owner have to consent to the vacation also, just when I know?
Yes, they, they have to agree to it.
Wouldn't they? They get blamed.
I agree.
Anything else, Mr. Montgomery?
That's it.
Any questions for the petitioner? Commission, we have for us S sixty-four twenty-two, two variance requests, half-street improvements, sidewalks, issues with, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, next case, we have S sixty-five twenty-two, Thirty-First Avenue, a re-survey of Block Eight and part of Block Nine, Abernathy Edition. This is consisting of three residential lots on approximately one point zero nine acres located at five twenty-five Thirty-First Avenue East in Council District Five. Here's the vicinity map. This is just northeast of the Tuscaloosa Gateway. And here's an aerial view of the property. Here's the plat with contours and without. This is to create three new residential lots coming in at about fifteen thousand square feet each. They'll also be removing a remnant lot line to the north of the property. And they are requesting half-street improvements and sidewalks.
Engineering? Petitioner?
Yes, Mike Hicks with Hernan Hicks Associates, here on behalf of the petitioner. I don't have a lot to add to it, just making three lots out of this one big one. The elevation falls off drastically on the east side. Pretty much, the eastern two-thirds, pretty much useless, so this is the builders' group planning on adding three new houses to Albert.
Yeah. We had a question about your new name, Mike.
That's my nickname.
Back to too much.
Don't go any further.
I say, that's enough said. Thank, thank you, thank you, Roxy. I mean, I'm Mike. All right, pretty, pretty clear subdivision here.
There's a, there's a twenty-foot alley on the south that were, there were suggestions made to vacate it, but to wait the time it would take to just gain ten feet, wouldn't really be worth it.
Thank you, Mike. All right, commission before us, we have, what's the variance request again? Pull them up. We have S sixty-five twenty-two subdivision, three lots. We had two variance requests. Engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Ms. Hare?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Next case, we have S sixty-six twenty-two. This is the re-survey of lots one and two R of Watercolor Phase One, a re-survey of lots two, three, and four Watercolor Phase One, consisting of one residential lot on approximately six point three acres, located at the intersection of Watercolor and House Bend Road. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map towards the lake. An aerial view of the property. Here's the plat with contours and without. So the area that we're looking at is your top left-hand corner of the screen. They'll be removing that interior lot line and consolidating to be one lot. And they are requesting capped sewer.
Engineering?
We're okay with that.
Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Michael McGuire, represent Watercolor LLC. Basically, these two lots, it just really has one good building site. They feel like it's a better market just to combine them into one large estate-sized lot and sell it as one. We've been through the Health Department. Everything's approved, ready to go. And of course, roads are all built and constructed.
Mike, what's the OS one in the corner of one R? What is that?
It's a, there's actually two. When you turn in the development, there's two humongous oak trees. And we just set two oak trees, and we just kind of set aside some open space to protect them. Unfortunately, it's dying now.
You don't want to include that one R?
Is that? Sorry.
Go ahead. Any drive would be accessed off of Watercolor Drive, then? Nothing coming off House?
They would have the option to do either or. It'd be up to them. To be honest, the best place unfortunately is gonna be on House. But they may, if they could build a drive just, I guess, southeast or southwest of OS one, yeah, and go in that way if they wanted to.
Yeah, that's, that's their decision. Anything else? Any questions for Mr. McGuire? Okay. For us, commission, we have S sixty-two twenty-two, re-survey lot one and two R of Watercolor Phase One with one variance request, capped sewer. Engineering has... Watercolor Phase One, with one variance request, capped sewer. Engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, commission, last case of the evening, we have S sixty-seven twenty-two. This is the re-survey of Lot 458, Towns of North River, a re-survey of lots two-ten through two-twelve, the towns of North River. This is consisting of ten townhome lots and one open space lot on approximately 0.9 acres located south of thirteen-oh-two, the towns, and east of one-one-one-five, the towns. This is in Council District Three. Here's the vicinity map. This is at the beginning of the town's neighborhood, right behind the church. Here's an aerial view of the property. And here is the plat with contours and without. Again, this is a ten-lot townhome subdivision. They'll be dedicating a twenty-foot alley to the rear, and that will allow for them to access their parking that will be in the rear of the townhomes. And the open space lot runs right in the middle. They're requesting lot width setbacks and lot size.
Engineering, let's talk about the, I know we had a conversation in chair, vice-chair, and one of our concerns was the, the on-street parking and how that would impact right-of-way. Can you clarify that and talk to us about those variance requests?
Well, the lot size, I don't think there's a variance request that's really tied to this, this paving width, but we went out and double-checked, and I verified with the fire marshal. When you add the parallel parking to both the north and the south sides of the roadways, there'll still be a clear path for two-way traffic that also meets the fire apparatus requirement as well.
I'm curious, does the fire, does that also apply to the, the back alley right-of-way? I mean, is that...
That, that's right.
They have clearance on that, too?
That, that's correct. Fire apparatus minimum width is twenty feet. The, the town's drive will exceed that twenty feet, and the alley meets the minimum.
And this is in conformity with the town's master plan.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, I'm Michael McGuire, I'm representing Corbin Custom Homes. This is one of the few lots left in the, the commercial part up in the front of the towns of North River. We had a very similar concept. Chris Hayslip was gonna develop years ago, actually designed it, had plans, and then he just kind of shelved it for some reason. The only difference was nine townhome units versus ten that you see here. All the sewer laterals in place, water's in place. Of course, we have to set meters and tie in that, but storm sewers on the back of it. The alley width is very, I mean, it's the exact same thing we did in, throughout the towns of North River. That concept, same concept. So everything has worked so far. You know, if I've got any other questions, Mr. Corbin's here. Oh, yes, the, all the commercial projects, the coffee shop, the church, there's a cross- reciprocating parking and ingress and egress easement that applies to everybody. Basically, from the beginning of the residential homes all the way back out into the main entrance.
So access through the, I guess what I'd call, through the church parking lot and stuff, but...
Yes, on the west side, there's a fifty-foot right-of-way, and on the east side, the parking lot of the church.
Mike, lot one, I'm trying to understand where the corner of the building is, the corner, you have that existing storm drain. Is the corner of the property right there adjacent to where the cars park, or is it extended? Is that a curved line where your number thirty-nine is?
You see, on the, the twenty-foot alley, the actual alley width takes up all of the twenty feet. If you...
So you're not building, I mean, no part of the way this, I don't... So that's, that's the footprint of the building. That back line, the thirty-foot back line, what is that?
I was gonna ask, is that a building envelope, twenty-seven?
The thirty-foot is the actual width of the lot itself.
I understand that. So, but the back of the building is the back of bumper of the car?
Yes, yes, correct, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's the back of the building?
Yes.
So what is that distance between there and, I guess, that twenty-foot alley? Is that a concrete drive or something?
Uh, I'd, I'd hate to say it, I don't know off the top of my head. I think it's about ten feet.
You've got, I see the twenty-foot alley, you've got delineated and, with the dots on it. So between the twenty-foot alley and the cars, the, I guess, the back of the house, is that a driveway?
Yes, tiny, I think it's about twelve feet, if I recall.
Okay.
Actual buildings themselves are basically got a thirty...
Driving on dirt, concrete, asphalt, air, what?
Concrete.
Okay.
Well, well, what, uh, Mr. Chairman, can they open the car door? How do you, you gonna have to crawl out the other side, Hal?
You talking about in the, in the house or the back?
Right now? You gonna have to crawl out the, how do you get out of the car in the garage?
Well, the, I mean, the, the garage itself is gonna be large enough for two cars to give space on either side for people to get in and out.
I'm just looking at the picture you put in.
You're saying I drew my cars too far to the, to the left?
Well...
Yeah, I could, I could have scaled them down, because they're probably...
I'm saying, if you open the car door in the middle, you can't get out of it.
Yeah. It, it does work, I'm positive.
I can tell you, my wife couldn't park in this.
Well, it's a church property.
Park in there by herself.
That's there now.
So, one other question?
That's private, but I guess there'll get a cross-access on it.
Is this gonna be two-way traffic in the back, or one-way?
Two-way.
On a twenty-foot alley?
Mm-hmm. And no parking on the alley?
No parking on the alley, parking inside in the parallel in the front.
Two-way traffic in twenty-foot alley, right?
So...
Are y'all trying to keep body men in, in business?
Yeah, towns of North Rivers is the exact same way, a twenty-foot alley with a full width.
So, Michael, if, I realize, like, in my house, we have junk in the garage on one side, and so that may happen, you know? But, but where will the car park if, I mean, will it park on the street?
The garage.
But if you have to, I mean, because that, you're not gonna park, will you, really?
We're proud to have two off-street parking spaces, and we're showing them in the garage.
I mean, I'm saying, even if you get out of the car, you can't walk around the front of it.
Have you, have y'all, I know you all know Chris Hayslip. You don't park on the street in the towns of North River, or, I mean, they're very, they're pretty strict about it. Well, that's a little different. Here, you've got, you've got striped parking out front on this. You got twelve spaces, right?
Yes.
Are you gonna stripe the ones across the street, too? I mean, I, I think, I, you know, our thinking is, like you're saying, you know...
They're in the process of developing that. I mean, I'm sure we can, if that's something we need to do, I'll definitely give it Chris, but...
Well, our, our thinking was, you know, obviously, there's no place to park in the, we can't have anybody parking in the back, right? So if, if you got a two-car garage, and you have a child and are a guest, then they're gonna park out front. And...
Or in the driveway.
They gonna have twelve, well?
Lot of driveway. The church parking lot, I mean, there's...
Okay, well.
I mean...
Yeah. I mean, as long as the church is in agreement with it, I guess. It's in the documents. It's in the documents, okay.
It's, it's a recorded agreement with the church and basically all the commercial property in the town. I mean, even the people on the north side could use the church parking lot.
This is one of those codes that it does meet code requirements because of your cross-park agreement and, and the, the ability to park on the streets, but somebody gonna park on the alley. You gonna do it. I mean, you just gonna have to maintain that through your HOA, I guess.
Come, come on the microphone, so it'll be on the record.
Yes, sir. So this was just a rough rendering of the unit, so we're possibly gonna play with these, and I hadn't even really discussed it with Michael, but maybe making the corner units larger and making those maybe three-car garages, and make, widening those and narrowing up the, the interior units and go, making those a little narrower, smaller square footage, but then giving the other corner units three...
Doesn't look like it would. Would you have enough room to, someone to park in, on the, in the driveway and be, and still be clear the twenty-foot alley if it got right up against the, the garage door? Is there enough, is that enough?
Depends on the vehicle, I think.
No, that's gonna be tight.
If it's a Z seventy-one pickup, you're not...
They'd be sticking halfway out.
That's gonna be tight.
But, I mean, is, they've drawn it where they can meet the parking requirements, and so we're, we're pointing out they have a potential problem. Eventually, this will be an HOA problem, right?
Yeah.
In other words, they're gonna have to tow or complain and write ugly notes and do all that kind of thing. Because we won't have police powers to go do anything.
And there would be an HOA?
Oh, yes, sir. It's still part of the, the towns. And like I said, I wouldn't have brought, ever brought it to us if we didn't have that.
That'd be part of the HOA of the towns.
Correct, yes, sir.
Oh, really? Okay.
And if we didn't have the parking agreement, I would have never considered even doing this. We actually live in the town, so, we live in the back, so I have to deal with all these people.
Yeah, you'll get all the calls, then, won't you?
Knock it on my door.
They're coming.
I have one question. What's gonna be in the open space?
Oh, we talked about maybe a grill, just, more or less, it's just a, a buffer and just giving some separation, so we wouldn't have to build all ten of them at one time. So we can do it, like, in phases, was my kind of thought process, but also giving up, maybe a couple of grills, picnic table, possibly?
Well, speaking of which, where are the garbage carts?
In the towns, we normally just keep them, everybody keeps them in the garage, so that's what we were...
Yeah, now, now, is this dotted line, the garage actually, I, I didn't, I didn't understand. Is this actually to scale the garage?
Yeah, it's to scale, I mean, twenty-two, about twenty-two, which is a typical garage. There's plenty of room for two cars. In fact, those cars are probably the size of a Z seventy-one pickup.
So you're, you're saying...
I should have drawn a Mini Cooper.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just to keep us on track.
Because you're gonna have a garbage cart in between them.
Oh, is that...
This is the exact same thing that we've done at the towns, and you gotta keep in mind, when you back out of the garage, you got twelve feet, so they're naturally gonna start their turning radius as they back out. It's the same thing, the, the garages in the towns of North River are probably not three or four feet from the edge of the concrete, maximum five feet.
Well, you've been drawing cars and garages for thirty years. If you start turning that car before he comes down that garage, he's gonna take the front end off of it.
Oh, no. Well, I'm just saying, there's plenty of room for them. You got twelve and twenty feet, and you need about twenty-eight feet to make the maneuver.
As long as it's in our problem, counselor, are we okay on this?
Just to keep us on track, we're also just looking at the lot lines. The garages are not included in the lot lines.
But he just told us that that's, that's to scale.
I'm gonna say it's a public safety issue. I'm calling it a public safety.
Well, as long as we get clear, you know, I don't care if they, if they had to crawl out the window of the, of the car.
Maybe thunder.
I mean, that's, because it's in your best interest to draw it to where it works, I mean, to build it where it works.
Right. Like I said, Mr. Rumsey, this is just a conceptual for the actual building box. So our, we're, once we get to the design phase, by going to the two-car on the majority of them, the goal was to produce some type of fence that would access a courtyard, like the original ones that are in the towns. There's eight or nine on Anna Square, and they all have a courtyard inside the unit that's kind of in between the garage and the main house. So by going with the two-car, I would have a place for my air conditioners, and also an access point to, back to the garbage cart and then access my courtyard. But, like I said, this, that was, once we get to the design phase of the actual units.
Everybody in town knows, if you live in the towns, you gotta have a golf cart.
What about a mailbox?
Where's a golf cart gonna park?
We can work on that. We just hadn't, but also, they, they were pulling people over and writing tickets for the golf carts, too, so...
Talk to him about that.
But I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, we've, we've done, and, and back to the garages, yes, twenty-two foot garage is standard, which yields you twenty-one-six inside. Most of our garages, we make them twenty-four to twenty-five. So all that will be taken into account for everybody driving the bigger SUVs and things like that.
In ten years, they may have a car come and pick you up. I mean, who knows?
Like I said, this was just the building box, so we're still...
Well, back to what was said earlier, this, this was on the master plan originally, so, when, when the...
And there was actually, if I'm not mistaken, there was actually twelve originally that were approved.
Well, I, I just, I just foresee some issues being arose and that, and like I said, our issue is, is on the master plan. The buyer should have known that, don't live in the town.
You're only approving the lot lines, really.
No, exactly, so...
And we're only approving...
And going less instantly and not, and giving to, versus sticking another unit in there, I thought was a benefit, too, to have a little common space for everyone.
Okay.
But also how they have the use of all the parks, you know, because it is part of the town.
Good enough. Anything else for the petitioner? All right. Any more comments before, before we take our final vote for the evening? Commission, before us, we have S sixty-seven twenty-two, re-survey of Lot 458, Towns of North River, three variance requests, lot width setbacks, lot size. Engineering has no issues with, and it was on the master plan. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hair?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved. Hold on one second, we got...
And then, really quick, before we adjourn, just wanted to remind you guys that we do have a framework code update meeting on Wednesday from five to seven, seven being the absolute latest. We'll be going over the lakes code update, so please make sure you can be there.
Let me ask staff questions. So, so many times when we get in this, we, we wanna look at a larger picture. Do we not have capabilities of going to Google Maps so that we can pull out?
Yeah, we can take that into account. We'll, we'll figure something out. It makes sense.
It'll just like the, the eat-my-beat saying, we'd like to look at this lady's house and fit.
Well, the, the only, we'll, we'll talk.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.